I'm back, can you put your video on so I know when we're all back? As we wait for the few others, everybody get something to eat? No?
I was just wondering if Marv had snacks in the waiting room while he was there.
In my waiting room, my virtual waiting room? They would probably be as tasty as your chairs behind you are able to be sat in.
I filled up on Rice Krispies today, Julie. Um, I think I had about fourteen of them. So, that's what I've had today for nourishment.
I hope you mean bars and not individual just Rice Krispie Puffs.
No, they have the bars, they're about, I mean, just by an inch is all.
Yeah. Well, it looks like we have everyone except for Laura Hinek back, so we'll get started. And Laura can join in when she gets on. Um, so the next part of the session, we're going to talk about productive dialogue, which a lot of it is, um, we'll reference some of those articles that you read or chapters. So teamwork is, for me personally, the first part of teamwork and group decision making is perspective. And so not just perspective, learning others' perspective, which is really important, but that's part of the conversation. I'm talking even before the conversation to have that realization on yourself that we all see things differently. And there's a reason for that. Um, you know, life experiences, different generations, because you had different life experiences based on your generation, personal experiences. You all have, there's a lot of people on your council who have had long-term relationships with each other as well, so you have history together that sometimes will change your perspective during the decision-making process. So, um, I think we talked quickly about that. That free test of connector planner thinker mover that also changes how we enter into a room to make a decision. So being aware yourself of, um, of your own personality traits and how you process information, how you communicate, um, is important. So I'm curious, let's go around the room quickly. Was there anything that each of you learned from taking that quick little test that is, is you think other people would benefit from knowing about how you communicate? Um, so the first place, person on my screen is City Administrator Grauman. Did you get a chance to take it?
Yes, I did. And, uh, although it ended up, ended up with a probably a more surprising result uh, than, than I thought. I've, I've had others, if you know the red, blue, green, uh, Insights Program. I'm a, I'm a heavy red, which is a get or done. I rely on facts on the blue. And I like to have fun with the yellow.
Okay.
And so, when, when I took the, 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 the simple one, I ended up actually being a planner, uh, which I thought I was going to be the mover. But, uh, irregardless, I kind of know, you know, my personality and how I communicate. And was, you know, mentioned earlier that, that, uh, I think, you know, you had mentioned that you change how you relate to somebody else. And, um, that maybe you're superior, you know, I, I, I don't know. Maybe is, maybe isn't. I would think the Assistant Executive Director would be, you know, kind of up there. But I take that and I flip it around and I try and change, you know, as being the City Administrator, I try and change how I deal with all the subordinates. You know, instead of the subordinate's changing to me, I change to the type of personality or communication style of my subordinate. So it, it makes me much more dynamic. But it, uh, it doesn't, it doesn't make everybody, you know, look to the administrator and say, "Okay, if you want something, this is what you got to do to get it." It's, it's more of, tell me what, how you think you, you know, the information, and I will change how I think about it as best I can. And I just think it's perspective again. You know, which side of that coin are you going to be on? Uh, both of you can't change, because if you did, then you'd really be confused. But, uh, but that's, that's kind of the, the, the gist that I took out of that was that one, I, I, I can be many of the different, of the four, uh, different communicators depending on the situation and who I'm talking to. So, that's my takeaway.
Mayor, you're next on my screen. Anything that you found interesting that you think other people would benefit knowing about how you communicate?
Why that is interesting, because it came up that I, that I was a planner. And I think that's the only time that I've ever come up that I'm a planner, because I'm generally a get it done type of person and read the details to somebody else. So, um, I think a lot of it depends upon where you are in your life cycle at the time or whichever went on in your life. And, uh, it just happens to be right now, I need to be working on planning. So I think that's why that came through so high.
Councilmember Osnes, you're next on my screen.
I'm, uh, I'm jumping on the planner bandwagon. I, I guess I wasn't too surprised. I got, what I took away from it was that I just, um, I, I like to get things done. I like to have the information. I'm going to like to make decisions and move on. Um, I don't like, I don't like a, a lot of discussion about things and dragging feet. I just, I want to click things off.
Councilmember Alvarado, you're next.
Well, I wasn't a planner. I think I was, um, I, I just remember the color. I was the, the blue. I think I was kind of a consensus guy or, or, um, I wanted to hear stories or tell stories. That's kind of how I approached it, I guess. Hear, hear, hear what people had to say. Um, that's kind of where I'm at, I guess. Thanks.
All right, Councilmember Davis.
Well, mine was a thinker. Um, so I thought I was a get or done kind of person, but my test said I was a thinker. Which, um, I guess I can see that, um, when we're at a meeting. I'd like to really take in what everyone is saying and think about it. Um, I usually, you know, I might go there with how I think I want to vote, but then as I think on what people are saying, I might change my mind. So, I still like to get things done.
Councilmember Swatson?
I'm a planner. And the tips for communicating with planners in the sheet is write on target. Be prepared, give details, stay on target. That would all be very realistic for me. And I would add one more, and that is don't waste my time. I have a lot going on and I just let, let's hop to it and move on.
Councilmember Miskie?
Well, I'm taking a few of these, and I was interested if they're based on Myers-Briggs, because some of those letters looks familiar to me. But I, and when I've taken those, I've sit between these two things, and it, it worked here as well. So I'm between a thinker and a connector, which seem like you have to use them in a different kind of context from here and there. But, um, conceptual thinking is where I usually sit there. And I think it's my training as a scientist that I am in that mode. So, um, it was, it was just another, another thing to learn and, um, another lens to take a look through.
Councilmember Nelson?
Um, I showed up as a thinker, and I found the questions interesting. And, and so I, um, I don't have a strong opinion on whether I feel strongly about being a thinker or not. But in my career, I've been through a lot of sales trading and customer service trading and working with seniors. And so, um, you know, I think, um, being able to connect to the person or, you know, just, um, you know, listening and working with the person, I think is, is trying to understand who you're trying to get a point across to, um, with that. So maybe that fits into that area. So, I don't know.
Councilmember Plomman?
Yeah, I was, I was wanting to go for connector, but I ended up being a little bit more thinker. Um, I think I, I bridged the gap, I guess. I think big picture in terms of my overall life and talking to people. I, I really like to communicate. I like harmony, I like good relationships, I like bringing people together. I think an area that I, um, it can be good and it can be, it can be a little bit of a drawback. And that is, um, sometimes when I get too zoomed in on an issue, then I lose some of that connectivity, so to speak, and I become more of a thinker. And, uh, I got to learn to, uh, to take that and to harness the good of that and use it for, for good as opposed as a distraction, so to speak. So, thanks.
And Councilmember Davis, did I touch on you already? Yeah, so I think everybody, right? Did I miss anybody? Any surprises? Um, so I think that, that's useful to know. And again, that's a very simplistic test. Um, I think you're right. I think it was based on the Myers-Briggs. Um, I personally like Strength Finders the best, but that takes a lot, it takes some time and costs some money. And so I don't usually use them in this session. Uh, but, but it's good to know how you, how, how you think before you go into a meeting. But also be aware of how other people think. So to your point, um, City Administrator Grauman, I do, um, part of my strengths and my superpowers is finding uniqueness in everybody. And so I do, depending on if I know how they communicate, I will change my manner of communication to make sure that we can have clarity. Because I do think, going back to what we all talked about before, understanding that everybody's opinion is valid to them and being clear about my story as well as their story is important to be able to understand the underlying interests rather than what's coming out of the mouth and what the positions are. There's usually underlying interests that are, are more important. Um, before we move on to the next slide, what do you see on the screen? Shout out.
A bird duck, uh, rabbit duck, sorry. Dinner.
Dinner. Okay, well, now we're getting punchy, so I'm just going to keep moving along. But yes, okay, let's see, raise, does everybody see the duck and the rabbit? Raise your hand. Okay. So I don't have to show it to anybody? Mayor, do you see the duck and the rabbit? All right.
You know, Pam, you've tried to show me both, and I still can't see them. I only see the duck. We'll have to sit down to that together one night.
Yeah, we will. I think that must tell something about you, Laura. We'll dig into that. Um, so the, being, the, the first part of a collaborative communication process is creating a safe space. And a lot of folks think of that as your meeting space. But really, it's creating that trust or the safe space in the room for everybody to have their opinion and be able to have the time to have the discussion, to be able to have a process in place where they can get the information they need. So really, for me, a safe space is knowing that the people in the room are there to learn your perspective and listen to your viewpoint and see it as valid. Just, again, I personally don't think that everything has to be a consensus, but taking the time to understand each other's, um, perspective is going to, um, help you come up with a more integrated solution. Because we certainly can't think of every answer on our own. And people can, um, introduce ideas that, that, um, I would never think about or knew you would never think about. So I think it was interesting, and I know that Councilmember Davis and I had talked about this, but I think it's interesting, the story about the parade. Anybody else find that story interesting? Councilmember Davis, you want to comment on what we talked about?
Well, it was just interesting how the little boy saw different, um, he picked out the tractors in the parade as opposed to the, the man he was with who picked out, was it the cheerleaders or something?
Right.
Yeah, so they each saw different things in the parade based on what was interesting to them.
Right, so the little boy thought it was a truck parade. And the other, you know, person thought it was just a, a, sure, like a homecoming parade or something like that. Um, so these are good productive mindset, um, is to follow. If you have process, you can follow it. It really takes away that personal, knowing yourself. You know, I don't know how many of you take your phones on the dais. Um, I know we're all busy and it's really hard to not be checking in at home. And it, it's a little easier now that we're virtual, but when you're actually on site. Um, so I know sometimes it's hard to get away from your phone, but really if you can avoid some of the distractions, that will make other people feel heard more, um, if you seem to be more focused. Because most of communication is your nonverbal. And so if you're looking away or you're looking at your phone, that, that's telling people you're not interested. And you, and that might not be the case. You might be having an emergency, but they don't know that. They're just reading as you being distracted, so they must not be interested in what I'm saying. So that's part of creating that safe space for dialogue, to try to take away those distractions. Um, remember that you're there for a group purpose and that, so that's that commonality that we've talked about before. Councilmember Plomman said it. Find commonality, that you remind yourself that you're there for a group purpose. And, um, the hardest thing is when you have those decisions to really, the decisions are made, you have, you're going to tweak maybe a process to get the information that you all need, but then once that decision's made, move forward. I know that you all probably have people contacting you a lot after decisions are made from the public. And that, I think, I would imagine that would be one of the hard parts of the job, is to, um, respond. But if you can get into the habit of saying, you know, "It's not how I voted, but it was a council decision, we're moving forward with that. Um, thank you for your feedback, I'll take it back to the council if we discuss it again, but that's a council decision." Um, I don't know how you feel about that. Any thoughts on that? Nope? Thumbs up that we agree or just, "I'm sick of you, Pam, and I want you to stop talking." Sean gave the "sick of you, Pam, want to stop talking" a thumbs up. Okay, so, um, we are going to move forward. I want, do you want to say there was a great article in the Wall Street Journal, if you can find it? Dan found a, a version of it for me. I don't have a subscription, but for some reason I was able to read it the first time it came out. But it's an interesting article, if you want to go, and I have it on the last slide. But it was written, um, it was an interview of a hostage negotiator. And his, um, his recommendations on having difficult conversations. And a big part of it, um, was some of these productive mindset at the, at the front end. So it just is an interesting article to read. Um, so then once you get that safe space, you can engage in that dialogue. And so people generally come in with positions. And so they've already made up their mind and their argument and their decision. And so for you to understand their story, you need to get to those underlying, underlying interests. Because oftentimes those underlying interests will uncover something that then you can find commonality. The interests of the commonality can come through by question asking. And then you can come to a win-win decision just rather than pushing a position. Um, so if you can take away the "you always" or "I know you're going to have that position because we've known each other forever," and really get to the spot where you want to understand the underlying interests, why are they saying the things that they're saying? What information is missing that I don't have? Um, who have they been talking to that maybe I don't, I haven't been talking to, so maybe they know something? And we'll, and we'll go through some sample questions and how it turns to get more information for those underlying, um, for those underlying, um, interests. So asking questions and then listening to learn. Again, a reminder in your head, don't go with, "Okay, I'm acting like I'm listening because I'm shaking my head, but I'm really going to, I'm really formulating every reason why everything they're saying is wrong." So if you can get away from that and clear your mind and really focus on them, a lot of ways that people focus is, um, "This is what I'm hearing you say, am I getting it right?" So it isn't parroting back like, "Okay, Sean, uh, Councilmember Miskie, you want to change the mosquito spraying, uh, because you, because you love bees." Um, maybe there's something else that, you know, what information do you have? Where do you, where'd you get your research? Is this something the council should be, you know, talking about? So you're not going to get there unless you ask questions, and you can't ask questions if you don't really want to know the answers. So we'll talk a little bit about that, um, on how to do that. So barriers that can come into play for learning perspectives, again, your life experiences, how your hardware. So try to remind yourself about how you learn and, um, how, what you learned about other people and how they process information. So tips for your conversation. I think this is interesting, um, what did you all think about the story about Aunt Ursula and the mattress? Anybody want to comment? Mayor, you laughed, what'd you think? All right, you're having trouble unmuting? Okay, anybody else? Councilmember Osnes?
Well, I was going to problem solve with it. And even though, um, she, she wanted to keep that mattress because of, of the comfort it gave her and the memory, but then I, I, I was thinking that maybe there could be a, um, a box spring underneath that could give it more support. And then she wouldn't have the back trouble, but she could, uh, she could still have her old mattress, but just, um, help her structurally a little bit.
Right, and probably a great suggestion, but how'd you get there? Because you read the article, right?
Yes.
That those two people weren't asking the questions. You know, "Why is that mattress so important to you?" I think it was a nephew or a niece. Um, and so, so getting curious is really important. "What information do you have that I don't? Tell me more, help me understand." So that when you're asking questions that way, it's not being the niece or the nephew saying, "You're always unreasonable, you're just stuck in your ways." Um, and, and that's a, it's a really different feeling when you're having the conversation. So questioning your assumptions, remind yourself, we've talked a lot about this, it's a fresh day. Seek to understand their story. And identify your own contribution. So my husband and I, so this is really great for councils because they, and now in the public's monitoring it, so everybody can know about my marital, um, arguments. But I think it's a really good example. And poor Mark, my husband's name, Mark, he probably doesn't know that I share about our own situations. It'd probably make him crazy, because he's a very private person. He's the one who will stand at the elevator and he'll have his hand on my lower back so that he can push me in the elevator first, because he doesn't, he gets nervous around new people. But then he'll be whispering in my ear. "I don't need to know what they had for lunch. I don't need to know, you know, where they got their cute shoes that you are, you see on the, that they're wearing. I don't need to know how many kids they have." Because he knows that I like people and then I'll start these random conversations. So it's good for me to realize that sometimes I need to make him more comfortable. But we had a discussion about mowing. So I, we have, we have a service who we've had for a long time. And I thought maybe it'd be a good idea to stop the service and, um, get a mower. So I said, you know, "Maybe we should think about getting a mower." And he said, "No, we're not doing that." That was his response. "No, we're not doing that." So how do you think that made me feel? Anybody?
Didn't make you feel appreciated or understood?
Right, or listened to, same thing, right? So of course, because I'm so good at my job, what do I say? I say, "Well, how, how can you even say that? I mean, why, why would you even say that to me? What, what makes you the big decision maker?" Probably not the best way for me to, to respond, because then he got defensive. And he, the underlying interest, once I started asking the right questions in the right way, when I said, "I feel like that, I, that put me on the defensive." So I, I needed to acknowledge that contribution. I know that I snapped, it put me on the defensive because I felt like I wasn't listened to. "Tell me more why you, why you went right there." And, you know, the ultimate underlying interest was he likes to play golf and he doesn't want to have to be committed to mowing. And so for him, it's worth paying, having the service to mow the lawn. So we had a long discussion about how I mow, but we don't need to get to into that part. Um, so have a meaningful opportunity to tell the story. So he really needed to give me that opportunity to tell my story. And I needed to know that he was listening. And so that we could understand why he was going right to that position and treating everyone with, in, in respect and doing it. Um, so, so we're going to do an activity so we can kind of showcase how some of those question asking can happen. So Dan, and this is another reason why Dan and Laura are on the, on the, um, phone with me. So which, Laura, you are the mayor, I believe, correct? And Dan is a council member. And does one, do one of you want to read just the general fact scenario for me?
Sure. So, uh, the Council of Mosquito Heights has an agenda item on its agenda for construction of a new sidewalk along Marsh Boulevard. This arose out of safety concern by Councilmember Swatson, me, for middle school kids who are participating in the Buzz Learning Center's gardening program. These kids have to walk on Marsh Boulevard to get to the garden, and there's no sidewalk. Revenue source for these would be special assessments on the property owners who receive a benefit from it.
All right, so do you two want to start having a conversation on this agenda item?
Here. You ready, Madam Mayor?
I am, sorry about that, I lost my fact sheet, so, okay, I am ready, thank you.
All right, Madam Mayor, I really, I really do not understand your opposition to this. It, it, it doesn't make sense to me.
I do not understand, Councilmember, what it is that there isn't to understand. We're wanting to put in, or you are recommending that we put in a sidewalk and assessing, um, residents only in that part of the neighborhood. And that those residents do not want to be assessed that additional amount for something that will be used so rarely and it's not a permanent fixture. It is an industrial area. And I, I don't see how, um, there is a long-term benefit from even putting that sidewalk in that area.
You know, look, I understand that, that you might not see the benefit, but I mean, the reality is there is a benefit. If there wasn't, we wouldn't be able to assess. So I mean, it's kind of the fundamental premise of this whole thing, is they are getting a benefit from it. And that's why we're going to ask them to contribute to part of the, part of the solution to this problem. And it really is a significant problem. We, we got to get a sidewalk in there. It's going to be beneficial for the neighborhood, it's going to be beneficial for the, the city, it's going to be beneficial for the kids and for the school district. It's really a win-win for everybody.
I appreciate what you're saying. However, I have been the mayor for fifteen years now. And the same sort of garden center was, uh, we were approached with the same idea, um, probably about ten years ago. And there was only gardening that happened over in that area probably about four times that summer. And I just can't possibly support something that would assess our residents for something that just is not going to be used that much.
Well, you know, I, 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 I mean, I don't know why you made the decision ten years ago. I wasn't on the council, I, I, I might have made a different decision. But that doesn't really matter. I mean, the issue is, we have kids, we have a, a, a learning center, have a formal gardening program there. We need to make sure that the kids can get there safely. I mean, I'm not going to feel very good if because of our failure to do something, we end up with a child getting hit by a car. That's going to be on all of us. And we got, we got to figure something out. And the fact that we didn't do it before doesn't mean that we shouldn't do it now.
I think though, respectfully, Councilmember, there is strong opposition to an assessment in just that area. And if we're going to consider this, if there is a way that we could think of a solution where the costs are spread more broadly, or something that is a cheaper option where we don't have to assess and rather pull maybe possibly from the general fund.
I, I think the reality, Madam Mayor, is that somebody's got to pay for it, right? And, and that, this proposal, do a partial assessment is a way to get it done. I, 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 I don't understand why you're so opposed to the assessment. I mean, I, I, you know, do you have, I mean, do you have friends of, own property there? I mean, have people been putting a bug in here? I mean, what, what's going on about your reluctance to sort of take a multi-pronged approach to, to dealing with this issue?
Well, I think of the three, three, Pam, are you cutting me off?
Yeah, I was going to cut you off, just to be considerate of time.
Yep, well, and the problem is, is everyone, "I'll never win an argument against Dan," so it's good that you quit this.
So did you, did anybody see any issues? So did you, did anybody see any issues with the way that they were dialoguing back and forth? Councilmember Overado?
They, they both seemed to dug in their heels, they each had their position, and I didn't feel that one was trying to, well, I think Dan was trying to get, he was starting to get around to asking the whys, "Why are you feeling this way?" or, or that sort of thing, but I, I felt they were pretty entrenched.
Anybody else? I agree with you. Councilmember Nelson, did you notice anything? No? Councilmember Schwanson?
There were some times when Laura was speaking, it sounded a bit condescending.
Thank you, I thought that was you.
And it probably put Dan on the defensive, I would guess. Councilmember Miski, anything?
Lots of you statements.
Yeah. Did anybody notice any hints of things that could have been talked about?
It, it sounded to me like there's maybe some commonality in terms of a, a program that they were talking about, and they were talking about, uh, the kids that were gonna be commuting to a particular program, and so there may have been an issue to, or an area to coalesce around that particular topic and maybe get away, steer away from the, the personal nature of the discussion and bring it back to the topics at hand, possibly?
I agree. Dan and Laura, do you want to show some questions that would have maybe had some different results?
Sure. So, Madam Mayor, can you, can you talk a little bit more about, about, you know, why the decision was made 10 years ago? Can you tell me what happened 10 years ago? You talked about it being a temporary issue, is that, is that what you're worried about? Where it's gonna happen again? And that's why you're reluctant to build a sidewalk, or, or is there something else, else that you're thinking?
Right, and I think from my perspective, I could have asked more questions such as, you know, digging in a little bit further about how often this program would be up and running, the, the, the safety protocol in that, that area, is there a concern with, with having children around that sidewalk area? I mean, just digging, digging further on, on why, why that project is needed for that area.
I also heard a hint about the assessment. Seems like the assessment is, is really what is, are, would you, are you opposed to it if, if there wasn't the assessment? You know, and is there alternative ways that we can make that safe, and would you be okay with that? So this is actually based on a real situation, and that was the case, if that, if there was a cross lock and a stop sign, which was much less costly and didn't have to have an assessment, then that would, that was agreed upon. So, your question asking can, can make a difference in what, having the open-ended questions and that, that chapter two talks about it, Stop Arguing About Who's Right and How to Ask Questions. There's also a great book that's called, you're not listening, but it really talks about those open-ended questions, and, "Tell me more, I'm having trouble understanding why you're so opposed to this." It sounds like it is the, just the assessment, am I understanding that right? Like checking in, some people call it synthesizing, some people call it paraphrasing, but it shows that you're listening and understanding and processing, so really getting away from the "you always, why do you," you know, where you went right to those assumptions about why somebody's taking a position, and taking a step back and saying, "Okay, what am I missing? Is there something that..." None of you want to make a bad decision for the city, and so having all that information on the table is what's gonna be most useful to all of you. And like I said, ultimately, you might vote the same way, but at least everybody feels like they had a, the same opportunity to be heard. So, so keep that in mind, and to be able to do that better, you, you stop talking and listening, engage in one conversation at a time, and that's particularly helpful in meetings, especially for minute takers. It's really hard to make sure you can keep track of what everybody's saying and doing if there's more than one conversation going at a time, and it also makes, I don't know if you've noticed this, but when people are talking over each other, it raises my heart rate, and it, and it makes you feel like you need to get into the middle of that. Like, "I'm not gonna be heard if I don't jump in too, and I need to raise my voice louder so I can be heard." So, so really having everything go through the mayor with equal opportunity to have the discussion and recognizing everybody and wanting to understand each other's perspective. Empathize with the person speaking, that doesn't mean you have to agree with them, it just means that you need to validly say their viewpoint's valid, and it, it matters to them, and I need to understand why before I vote. So doing that with question asking and concentrating on what's being said, you know, don't ask questions, don't make a statement through asking a question. So what I mean by that is when one of my kids has their phone going and I'll say, "Do you want me to get you your, your pods for that?" And they'll call me out on it, and they'll say, instead of, you know, "Obviously, you don't want this on, so why don't you just ask me if I have, if I would turn that off, because it's disruptive for you." So that transparency and not hiding a statement behind a question. So how you ask questions can put people on the defensive or make them feel more safe, that safe space. And reacting to ideas and not to speak for themselves, and sometimes that means you have to control yourself, so sometimes when you're feeling upset or angry, taking those breaths, taking a, a step away if you have to, to control, to control your anger, and share the responsibility, because communication is a two-way street. So there are roadblocks to that, so the name-calling, persuade, trying to persuade people rather than just listen, interrupting, all of that's gonna roadblock how people are interacting with each other and your ability to listen and learn. Anything stick out to you specifically in those? And we talked about some of these with avoid the "you always" or "why do you" statement, so being able to tell your position, "I feel this way," so when my husband's saying, "Nope, we're just not gonna do that," for me to be able to say, it makes me feel very defensive when I understand that to be, "You're just making the decision for us." I don't feel heard, I don't necessarily agree with you, and I'd like to talk about it. And so, so being able to take it away from him, from me saying, "You always just say no," or "You always don't listen to me," that makes him less defensive, too. So, focusing on the problem and using that neutral language. So here's some suggestions, these are in the materials, so can you say a little bit more about how you see things? What information do you have that I don't? How do you see it differently? And what impact do my actions have on you? Get that, get that out there. Were you reacting to something I did? And say more about, you know, these are just a few examples, there's more in that book that I provided you, The Difficult Conversations. So, and, and not that book, but another book that I give a reference to later, they had hired a marketing firm to do an interview of, of whether they should have later store hours, so they wanted to understand if people shopped at night. And so the question asking that they asked for a survey of the marketing research firm of surveying people, they, the way they asked the question really mattered. So, for example, "Do you shop late at night because you don't get to it during the day?" Do you think that was a bad or a good question? Anybody? Councilmember Palmer had his thumbs down, why is it bad?
That might give somebody the feeling that they're being called lazy or they're not fulfilling their obligations during the typical hours or the normal times that normal people should do things.
Yeah, so it might immediately put them on the defensive, create a bias. Anything else you hear in that? Councilmember Davis, anything? No? I would, I would submit that it also might lead them to think about, that, have the assumption that they do shop at night. You know, they're putting the idea in the head, "Do you shop late at night?" They're making that assumption that they're shopping late at night, when in reality, maybe they don't shop late at night, and so they're not giving that opportunity to learn that person's story. So, the book, we talked about how they changed the question asking to, "Tell me the last time you went to the store after 10:00 PM." That way they're getting more information about the number of people they're actually asking who actually do shop that late at night, and then more information about what the situations are, about why they went there after 10 at night. So it's, it's, it's more open and not so leading down one path. Does that make sense? Alright. So the three most important factors are that there's a fair process, and we heard that a little bit earlier today about being fair, equitable. You heard about it in Ideas for Projects, I think, we touched on it a little bit. So having that meaningful opportunity to tell your story and receiving assurances from the responder that they're listening and they want to know more. So you're there to listen to learn, not listen to find differences. Keep that in mind, as group decision makers, you want to know all those other positions of, of people in the public. You can't talk to every single person yourself, so listen to learn. Again, you might not change your vote, but you might learn something new, you might come up with a whole new situation, instead of an assessment for a sidewalk, you might put in a, a stop sign that nobody had thought of before. And so take that opportunity to really come up with some, some chances to, to learn from other people. And listen with authenticity, I have trouble saying that word, but, but your posture, distractions, phones, rolling your eyes, sighing, that's really hard to do, I know, but it makes a difference, especially when people are feeling defensive, they're gonna start looking for those triggers, they're gonna start looking for people and interactions that way, so, so try to be authentic and be there to hear. Does that make sense? Alright. So and de-escalate, again, you know yourself best, and so if, if people are getting upset and voices are getting raised, then maybe it's time to take a recess, take a breath, have, have somebody else speak for a while and then, and then come back to you. So, controlling your own reaction is gonna be the most useful. We all get really upset, and I don't know about you, but there's many times when my voice raises, I start yelling and I feel horrible afterwards, it's not what I intended to do, but I got there without thinking. So, I'm learning myself to, to know when I'm feeling elevated, my heart starts racing, my voice gets louder, and just to take that time to calm down and, and maybe, and I oftentimes do it by asking a question, and I'll admit to my contribution, like we've talked about before, my contribution, I'm feeling very defensive, I know that I am going to maybe assume some things that aren't true, so I'm gonna just take a break, I'd like to know more about why, why you're saying that. So try to do that, I know it's really hard. So, often ways that you can do that is, here's what I've heard so far, you know, if you can find some commonality, the common thread seems to be this, am I right? So these are some more suggestions on things to say to, you've heard their story, you've, reframed what they're saying back and, and affirmed it from them by saying some of these, these points of, "Am I hearing you right?", and then you have an opportunity to tell your own story. And telling your why, you can be very specific, so, let's say you're getting interrupted in a meeting, telling your why, "When I always get interrupted, I get angry because I feel like I'm not being listened to, and I feel like it's important that the residents know I have some thoughts on this, too. I'd like to address this through the mayor, and I'd like all council members to do that process so we can all have equal opportunity. What do you think?" So it's really taking that contribution of how you're feeling, you've listened to them, you found some commonality, and then you're telling your why. And then you can get to that point of generating options and some solutions. So just like tonight, we talked a lot about, at the beginning of the session, about what are some of the barriers for your communication, and there were some ideas that came out that you hadn't talked about yet, or that you didn't realize were issues, maybe up until this point, you know, how council was communicating with staff, or how the report looks for, for the committee, or, and then from the committee to the council. And so you were able to develop some of those integrative solutions by doing some question asking, but some of that question asking was taking a step back and not just positions about policy, but asking questions about what are some frustrations, what can we do better? What is, I'm hearing that you think there's gaps, where, where are those gaps coming from? Tell me more what you're missing. So then you can have those integrative solutions, you know, brainstorming's really hard in council meetings, right? So if there, sometimes, if you use work sessions, I don't know with your committee structure, I don't know how that works, but something to think about, and, and just be open to ideas. Of course, you're gonna be limited by different legal limitations, right? So oftentimes, your solutions are gonna have to be run by city attorneys, or, or your city staff knows a lot of the legal restrictions, but, but having that brainstorming going on and feeling listened to, even if it's something that you have to kick out later because of the legal limitation, there's nothing wrong with that, oftentimes that leads to more creative ideas, so. So that's the overview of communication. Any thoughts?
I, I'd just chime in, yeah, I think that's all right on the money it goes. I remember something a long time ago when I first started attending church back here in town after we got a new pastor, and he always, one of his key sayings that he kept repeating over and over, and it's been like echoing for 15 years, is, "Seek to understand before you seek to be right." And seems like in all, all avenues, whether it's political or, or, or personal relationships or business relationships, whenever I've come to an impasse in some areas as far as communication goes, I think dropping back to that saying, "Seek to understand before you seek to be right," you can gain a lot of levity in that, and it, it gives you a chance to zoom out and refresh. So yeah, it kind of supports everything that you just said, so I like that. I'm done, thanks.
Anybody else have some thoughts? Alright, well, I'm going to, so we're at nine o'clock, and you guys are probably pulling your hair out, because you've spent a lot of time with me, so I appreciate the time you spent tonight. I'm gonna have a final activity, so I'll give you a minute to think about it. As we go around the room, and I'm gonna record with your answers, because it's gonna be part of that document, too, as far as one thing you said tonight that you took away that you'd like to work on, on yourself for your communication, or that you think will benefit your council, whether it's policies. So before we start going around the room, I did kind of skip through the slide, I just want you to see it, I'm not bringing up the committee's, but if you start that conversation down the road again, or any other conversation where you feel like you're at complete odds and polar opposites, and, and you can't have one way or the other, this is a table that's used, there's a book called Polarity Management, it's really actually pretty interesting, and it's a simple table, but it's used a lot in strategic planning as well, as far as, you know, the positives of one polar side, and then the barriers to the other. And then, after brainstorming and listing out what each of those are to everybody, a discussion about, about what people can live with and not live with, and this is ever-changing based on the timeline of what's happening in, in the organization or the city or the corporation. So if there's ever any need for any of your sessions to use this polarity management, I can get you more information on that. I just wanted to stick it in there as a slide.
I just wanted to stick it in there as a slide, for a tool that a lot of cities use, so. Did I give you enough time to be able to think of something that you're committing to, to doing, changing, or incorporating? All right, so I'm gonna start with councilmember who's up on my bottom left, Ossneshur, on the bottom.
Okay, what am I doing?
You are telling me one thing that you learned tonight, or thought about tonight that you're gonna incorporate in the future, or that you think would be good for the council to incorporate.
Um, I guess probably one of the, the things that I would go back to is what I started with, is saying that I need to listen more, and what I'm gonna take away from that is how to ask questions, to try to understand the viewpoint of the other councilmember of, you know, "Why do you think that way?", or "Why, why do you want to decide to do it that way?", and try to understand their perspective.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Alvarado? Are you not ready?
I am ready, I'm ready.
Okay.
I, I found it quite interesting that there are four planners, four thinkers, and what appears to be one connector. There, there seems to be some sort of leaning in those, in those numbers, I guess. I think, with that being said, I think you have to think about how you communicate with others. Try to get on their, get a done timeline, and, and get things moving, and that sort of thing. Try to, try to understand why they wouldn't be in a hurry to move things, or what do they have to think about, I don't know. So, try to figure out their perspectives, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you. City Administrator Palmer?
Yeah, many, a lot of this information was kinda like just a, a repeat of the last forty years of seminars through the League, or the ICMA, or, or other organizations, and what I, what I took away from the readings and stuff like that was, I've done a lot of those things, and I've done a lot of them wrong, and, you know, you try and strive to continue to do, to do better, and I think that's the whole goal of this activity, is to do, do better. And the one thing I, I take away as I listen to everything is, is, you know, the, the city council may have, and staff may have, you know, some little issues, and maybe, you know, trust is, is a, is a big issue, but overall, you know, it's almost like the train runs on time, you know? We get our street projects done, we, we, we do this, we do that, so what we're trying to do is really fine-tune how we operate, and how we can do better. And, so the one thing that pops out at me, I guess, is kinda like the parade story, or even, even the lemon, the, or the orange, you know, story, where somebody wanted the inside of the orange, and somebody else wanted the zest part of the orange, and they couldn't get there because they weren't communicating, and that, to me, is, is, you know, the takeaway is we need to communicate a whole bunch more on what's expected, and, and how we can keep moving forward, because it's, it's not a train wreck, you know, in Wilmer, we are doing good things. The council does move forward and make decisions, it's just how can we do it smoother, or with less controversy, kind of thing.
Thank you, and it does, it sounds like some of those policies, too, that you wanna talk about, to fine-tune. Yeah. Councilmember Schwantus?
My goal will be to ask better questions.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Davis?
I'm just to remember that everybody has the best of intentions with everything, and that we all have the same goal, which is making Wilmer a great place to live.
Councilmember Nelson?
I think that we talked about working together is success, and back to Fernando's comment about expecting the best, and to work on our listening skills.
Well, I think tonight was another example of being able to come together and learn what needs to be done, and how, how we can do it. The key is the implementation piece, and I mentioned that earlier this evening. I think one of the things that I, a takeaway that I had was a comment that was made, that we hire good people with good skill sets and good knowledge, and we have to trust them, and when they bring recommendations to us, we should probably listen to those. And so one of the things that I'll be trying to do is making sure that staff is heard, and that we follow staff's recommendations, understanding at the same time that we do have an obligation to our citizens to be as responsible as we can.
Thank you, and Councilmember Miski?
Well, I was doing a tally, same as Mr. Alvarado, and I give myself a half a thinker, and maybe half a connector, but one of the things that I looked at is an issue I think that has happened over and over, there has always been an idea that there was, people don't like an idea right away, and they, they express it, and this kind of a thing. And as I'm looking at the thinker piece, that what stuck out to me is tips to communicate, the last one is, you know, don't misinterpret their need for information as interrogation. I wouldn't put that off on the people that don't think like the thinkers, you know, and the onus is on them to change. Now that I, I can see that in type, perhaps the onus is also on the thinkers to come up with better questions, so the others don't feel like they're being interrogated as well. So if people, kinda met them in the middle, perhaps that could alleviate some of those issues, 'cause that's just one that I've seen over and over again, kinda pulling a little bit from the communication styles and your questions.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate you all spending the last three hours with me, and I hope that it wasn't too frustrating with the technology, so I'm learning as we're going forward, eventually we'll be able to get back in person, so I appreciate your time, and unless you have any other questions, that's it for tonight. Here on the screen is those, the difficult conversations book that you have, but I really do like You're Not Listening by Kate Murphy, it's a quick read, and then Worried About Difficult Conversations, not shun, sorry about that typo, here's advice, and that's in that Wall Street Journal, just recently. So, just some things for you to, if you have extra time on your hands, and you wanna do a little more reading, there's some, some resources for you. We'll probably send a survey to Brian, so that he can send it out to you, and you can give us feedback on tonight and the service, but otherwise, unless you have questions for me, I can go ahead and end the meeting. Or Mayor, I suppose you should probably adjourn the meeting. There's a motion.
First off, I wanna thank Pam for the work that you did, not only this evening, but also putting the information together. It's not easy to dwell on that, and I know that you've had a lot of things happening with moving your son, et cetera, so thank you for doing that. Thanks to Dan also for the work that he put into it, and Laura, and I think this is another example of the good service that the League and the sort of cities can offer to us, so thank you for all that you did, and thank the council members that were able to attend. With that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll move and make a motion second.
Motion by Miski, seconded by Alvarado, we're adjourned.